Welcome to this forum for candidates in the election for Fresno City Council District 5. I'm JV Wire's senior reporter, David Taub. For the next hour, we'll be chatting with the three candidates about their vision, asking questions, and probing for answers. The special election is March 18th. In these forums, we try to keep the rules loose. There are no specific time limits, but I ask the candidates to keep their answers concise and on point. The only rule: please don't talk over each other. This forum is made possible by CMAC, and we'd like to thank them for providing the facilities and their top-notch staff. Now, let's meet the candidates. Elizabeth Johnson-Rosas is the current trustee for Fresno Unified in a district that partially overlaps with the city council district. She's also the deputy general manager for external affairs with Westland's Water District. Jose Leon Baraza is the CEO of the Southeast Fresno Community Development Association. He's also a member of the city's Parks Commission. And Brandon Vang is an elected member of the Sanger Unified School Board, which also has a partially overlapping district, the city council. Now, as a note to other two other candidates in this election, Paul Condon will be on the ballot, and Nicholas Wildstar, he qualified recently as a Wrighton. Now, let's get right to the questions. Jose, I'll start with you, and then we'll go to the others. I want to know, what is your philosophy of government? What do you see the role of the city council?
The important part of government is, and the council member, is to serve the community, to address the needs of the community. And in a city government, we're talking predominantly about urban needs, whether it has to do with the garbage collection, police protection. In addition, also, it's very important, the attraction of businesses through the area, promote economic prosperity, and generate quality life for everybody.
Brandon, what's the role of city government?
David, thank you very much for being the moderator tonight, and I want to thank CMAC for providing the forum for tonight. The role of government, and particularly, city council, is to represent the people, is to be as transparent as possible, and is to do, in a sense, you know, the wishes of the people. And so, government, regardless of what level the government is, in this case, it is city council, is to go out there to your community, to the voters, and to the constituents, and to listen to them, what is most concerning to them today and tomorrow.
And Elizabeth, the role of city council?
In a similar vein, the role of the government is really to be responsive to your community and to provide. That's why when I started, I kicked off my campaign with a survey, asking the community what their needs are for the city council. And really, that's going to be my marching orders, what the community says and has indicated to me. I've written all those needs down, and should I be elected? That'll be my marching orders.
Now, I'm gonna take a quick prediction and say, if I ask you what the top priority is, you're gonna tell me public safety and the economy. So besides those two issues, public safety and economy, well, what is a top issue facing the district? And what do you think the city hall, or the person you're trying to replace in the city council role, has not done? And Elizabeth, we'll start with you.
Absolutely. So going back to the survey, there were three things: public safety, as you mentioned, homelessness, and roads. So I would say homelessness was the most prevalent thing. It has been an issue that impacts everybody in the various facets of life. People don't feel comfortable going to the supermarket. People don't feel comfortable pumping gas or going to a local park. And so, that is an issue that we have to work together on and solve in a compassionate manner. I know there's been a lot of money at that issue, and I think that we can do a lot with current resources and partnerships. And I have a several-point proposal that we can do with some of the existing resources available, including utilize state funding, continuing the work that's been done with purchasing the motels, working with the county on establishing a triage center for the people that need a 72-hour hold, those people that are either having a mental health breakdown or on some kind of substance that are seemingly unsafe. And really, it's all about working together. And then, bringing in the private sector, that has been really affected by this situation as well, because we know that if these individuals are outside their businesses, defecating outside of businesses, or sleeping outside of businesses, that they're affecting a lot of economic development as well. And so, we need to bring in the private sector, partner with them, and be a part of the solution.
All right, a very specific answer, homeless, and interesting to hear that plan. Brandon, there's the economy, there's public safety. What else is gonna matter to the district, and what do you think the city hall has not done so far?
Well, it is very true. Year in and year out, the economy and public safety reigns one and two. The third, again, for District 5, and in particular, in certain parts of District 5, again, yes, it is homelessness. But we need to address the homeless issue with compassion. Yes, the United States Supreme Court has allowed local jurisdiction to somehow administer eviction of homeless people or unhoused people as they see fit. But at the same time, I do agree that homeless people, it's not a one-size-fits-all. There are a lot of homeless people who are of family, kids, and we need to identify and be compassionate about how we are going to address the homeless. Yes, it is going to take local resources, county resources, state resources, even federal resources combined together. And these leaders, including the city council, needs to work with not only elected officials, but also nonprofits. And again, it's not only the homeless issue, but in addition, why are there homeless? Again, the mental health issue is critical in addressing the homeless in the long term, but also affordable housing, David. These homeless families are homeless for a reason, and the city and the county, with local and state and federal resources, need to combine together to address that in the long term.
Brandon, we're gonna give you just a moment of how to build. Jose, what do you say?
I'd like to point out that the topic of the homeless or the unhoused is a topic that gets a lot of lip service. Previous council members have always continued to talk about it. But I'd like to acknowledge something good that the city and county have done. They have adopted an ordinance that now makes it mandatory for them to, or it makes it easier for the police and sheriff departments to pick up people. It becomes illegal to be lying on the bench or to be falling asleep in the middle of nowhere. And one important matter that has to be addressed is, small businesses are impacted by the presence of the homeless, in that many families will not go shop, and I hear from a lot of business owners. And it was interesting, because we've been around for around 12 years, serving the community, dealing with the homeless, and interacting in addressing those issues, we just think that the next challenge is going to be, where do we take them? Because the places that the homeless are taken, because now we, city government and the county now have the authority to do it, but we now have to provide adequate facilities that provide treatment, that provide care, that provide all the amenities that are necessary for them to survive. And I would even venture that down the road, we could even offer job training, once they overcome all the challenges of life.
All right, we hear a lot of different options on your homeless plans, but growth in the economy, you know, they're always the major issues. One of your future colleagues recently said that developers are leapfrogging Fresno. Why do you think that is, that they're going to other places, Madera, Visalia, Hanford? How do you bring them back? And do you have a plan for incentives to help recruit home builders and commerce? Brandon, I'll start with you.
Growth is inevitable, and particularly in southeast Fresno. The eastern part of southeast Fresno is the perfect, is the prime area for growth. And at the same time, we have to address growth within District 5 as well. I live by the edge of the farm. I am a stone's throw away, and I can see that the growth is coming, and it has surpassed the city's plan. Now, SADA, southeast Fresno area, is a projection of 10, 20, 30 years' growth for southeast Fresno. For the last 25 years, the growth in that area has been inconsistent with the vision of the citizens in that area. And I am one of those citizens who live in that area. We need to contact, we need to go back and be transparent and talk to the constituents in that particular area, or in the inside or the western part of District 5, to see what kind of growth they want.
So, are you saying that you're against SADA?
I am pro-growth, okay? I'm for growth, but at the same time, we need to grow smart and not grow in the dark. Meaning, go to the area and go to the constituents and ask them how do they want growth. For example, yes, we need single-family homes, but at the same time, where are these families going to shop? Where are they going to go see their doctors, their dentist? Where are they going to have the green space, the recreational space? It should be within the vicinity.
Well, I mean, that's all aspirational, but how do you actually get them there? You know, do you have specifics, you know, so they're building in southeast Fresno as opposed to southeast Visalia?
Well, I mean, the developers come in, there's developer fees, yes, you know, charge them appropriately. And at the same time, as a city council member, you are not, in a sense, you know, beholden to anybody, but you should represent your constituents first and foremost, not only in terms of the interest, but in terms of the ideas of how growth is gonna come about. And so, at the same time, you are going to find how infrastructures, how sewage, how streets, not only in terms of repair, but expansion of that. And it has to be collaboration of the city government and the private business sector, in this case, the developers and others. It's a partnership between private and public, and at the same time, at the center are the citizens, are the people, the constituents, the voters in District 5.
All right, Elizabeth, you know, how do you bring these builders back to Fresno? How do you build them, have them build in southeast Fresno?
Yeah, absolutely. So development is really important to the district. There's a lot of needs. If you look at the eastern portion of the district, a lot of members of that community want to see restaurants, they want to see shopping, they want to see services, they want to see medical facilities. If you look at more of the western part of the district, they want to see investment in infrastructure, they want to see different types of services. And so, there's a lot of development needs, investment in the corridor, Cesar Chavez Kings Canyon corridor, so there are a lot of development needs. And I do see it as my job of being a champion for southeast Fresno, and so, I see it as twofold. One, it's not just about incentives, as you mentioned, it's really about clarity in the process. What businesses want and need is an ally at city hall that understands that their needs are not just in terms of baking things pencil out financially, but they also have a tight schedule. They need to have clarity in the process, and I know our planning and development staff are competent individuals and such, but we sometimes have failed to provide clarity to developers in terms of what the regulations are and what the expectations are of them. So if we can do that and provide review of permits and such in a timely manner, I think we could go a long way in being more business-friendly for development, and I will definitely be an ally for that. And two, I also see my job as selling southeast Fresno, going out and being active at different conventions and convenings, and saying why you should be coming to southeast Fresno, why should your business locate in southeast Fresno, what are the assets that we have to attract businesses.
So what would you tell them? What's your 15-second elevator pitch to get developers in this area?
We have great people.
Great people. Jose, hi, what's your incentive plan? How do you get people to build in southeast Fresno?
Well, one of the things that's missing is that council members have to pay more attention to land use plans. By that, I'm talking about the central southeast Fresno area-specific plan that has been hanging there for the last five years. Investors want to have a clear picture of what to expect, a blueprint for growth and development. We do not have plans, the plans get done and we spend money, but they don't get approved. And we have another, an industrial park in southeast Fresno also, that is still dragging, has not been implemented. And I said the other time that, because the council member was running for office, and I repeat it again, I feel that there has to be more attention given to the land use plans that are necessary. Also, I think that what we talk about, since there was a comment about the growth in the outskirts.
Right, so I was gonna say, you know, yeah, where do you stand on SADA? Just to clarify, it's a southeast development area, which will greatly expand the city southeastward, by mega amount, you know, at least in the proposals right now. So where do you stand on SADA?
I clearly oppose it, and the reason why I oppose it, maybe because I didn't get a lot of money from developers, so therefore, I mean, that's not necessarily the reason, but the reason is that the older parts of southeast Fresno are being neglected. We have needs in the older parts of southeast Fresno, and we already have some infrastructure that could allow us to do infield first. Let's use up the land that is vacant, that is available within the city, and then later we can consider taking up more valuable farmland. That's the part I don't like about that development project. And I think it's important that we clearly identify where is the money coming from for all the infrastructure, the schools, the libraries, that are necessary as you create a new, almost like a new city in the outskirts, way out there in the middle of nowhere. And so, anyway, I do not support that.
You're against it, so appreciate it. And Brandon, if you just want to clarify where you are on SADA briefly?
Again, I am for growth, and I believe growth is inevitable. If the city is going to grow its tax revenues, it has to grow also within, but outside of where the city limit is right now. And at the same time, we need to go back to the constituents and ask them how do they want that growth to take place. Again, I am not, you know, against, I'm not for, but I am for the people, and the people should have a say in terms of who's gonna be their neighbor, what is gonna grow next to them, what about the street beyond where the farmlands are, where the vacant lots are? You go to certain communities, and you talk to them, and you listen to them, and that's how it should be, partnership between city hall and the voters in District 5.
All right, we got one against, we got one neutral. Elizabeth, I guess you can be the tiebreaker. Where are you on SADA?
And I don't think it's that simple. So here's what I'll say. I think it's been recognized over at least the last decade or so, that the city has grown unsustainably, and that we need to do a better job of growing in a more sustainable manner. And what I mean by that is, we've stretched our resources. Unsustainable development on the fringe has caused roads to not be able to be properly financed, it's made our response times for emergency service longer, and it's not sustainable to continue to do that. That said, what's I think really crucial as part of this SADA development is to really look at the financing mechanisms, the water supply, and I would really be looking also at the air quality. I have perused the updated EIR to look at some of those things. The financing, though, I would be interested in seeing what they're looking at to address some of the issues that were brought up. So that'll be important, as I look forward to making a decision on that.
So it sounds like you could be a yes, assuming these things are.
I think we definitely need growth, we definitely will grow at some point, we need investment, and the way we do it needs to be smart. And so, how we finance all the infrastructure is going to be important, and so, that'll be what it hinges on, because at some point, we're gonna grow. It makes sense to plan it out, it makes sense to do it holistically, and to be thinking about the future, because this isn't gonna happen tomorrow, this is a couple decades out. So it makes sense to do it, it makes sense to think about it, it makes sense to earmark it, it's just making sure that these crucial pieces, water, air quality, financing are in place and are accurate, and are gonna make it sustainable.
All right, the city budget, they said there's gonna be at least $20 million in the hole, that's what it's looking like right now. So I want to know, what would you cut? And Brandon, we'll start with you, you know, that's a lot of money. What's on the chopping block for you?
Yes, it is projected that there will be a $20 million deficit in the city's budget. The city has an operation of nearly $2 billion. What I would not do is, I will not touch public safety. If anything, we should enhance public safety.
Is there a limit to that, then? You know, public safety is always, like, police and fire, about half the budget, at least half the general fund. Is there ever a limit for you, you know, percentage-wise?
No, that should be an open-ended question. But what I would also do is, you know, the hiring freeze, we should stop hiring right now and put a freeze to hiring. And not only that, the jobs of the employees who are retiring, you know, is it necessary to fill those positions right now? If not, then we should, you know, not refill those positions once retirees are retired. And if we can save a few thousand dollars, a few million dollars here and there, that's what we would do. Yes, $20 million is a lot of money, but at the same time, the services of the city that we provide to the citizens should be sustainable, it should be status quo, it should be the same. And if we can find, you know, perhaps other departments, public utilities, even city council, even the mayor's office, then we need to make a reduction in that as well.
Right, you're trustee for the Sanger Unified School Board, you deal with budgets. Have you had to cut budgets for Sanger Unified? And if so, you know, give me some examples of what you've decided to cut.
The answer is no, I have not for my nine-year tenure, and looking for our next fiscal budget, we are not at risk of laying off any employees or having to cut off any programs. So Sanger Unified has been, when it comes to policy, we have been conservative, but at the same time, we are able to meet the programs and the needs of the students and the parents of our school district.
All right, Elizabeth, $20 million, how do you solve that?
So I'll go back to my experience when I worked at city hall. I remember distinctly, I was one of those positions that was hired and subsequently had to leave city hall because of the economic downturn. So I know personally how city finances can uproot lives and affect individuals. There were many colleagues that lost their homes and lost their livelihoods as part of that. So city and budgeting and fiscal prudence are really important to me on a very personal level. And so, we're not at the position yet of preventing some of this, but I think first and foremost, of course, we look at attrition in non-frontline positions. And then, I really believe in asking our bargaining units first. We have a good portion of our contracts that are opening up this year, and I think we need to involve our employees in the process. They are experts, they know where, how the programs operate, how programs could operate more efficiently, and how we could implement cost-saving measures. And I think that's the best way in order to keep programs operating in a way that our constituents aren't feeling a reduction in services, while at the same time, being able to save money.
Now, as a Fresno Unified trustee, you deal with a budget that's almost the size of Fresno, if not bigger.
Yep.
Have you had to deal with budget cuts there? How did you handle that? What did you cut?
So I do have the perspective of dealing with a budget almost the same size as the city of Fresno, and thankfully, we've been able to have a healthy reserve. We have seen with the economy being less than it has been in the past, we've been in expansion mode for the last eight years, and this year being the first year that it's been contracting. So, long story short, we have not had to lay off people because we've been fiscally prudent, we still have a high credit rating, we still have prudent reserves, and we have been able to maintain our workforce because we've been able to be fiscally prudent and continue to provide a high level of programming for our students.
Jose, $20 million budget shortfall. If elected, you're gonna be jumping right into the budget process, so what's on the chopping block?
When I worked for Fresno County, I worked for the Fresno County Administrative Office, right below the border supervisors. And we had to explore all kinds of possibilities to cut back. And one of the things that obviously was a priority, and I would still do it, is essential services, like public safety and fire, would definitely would be the last to touch. Those would be my highest priority. The areas where I would explore cutting would be support services. By that, I mean, it might be the attorneys purchasing, some of the administrative functions that are not necessarily in the business of delivering services to the public. That would be the way we would approach it. The other way that we did it at the county was through a hiring freeze and through attrition. And we always, at the county, tried to avoid laying people off, if we can do it, but sometimes there may be, there is such a need sometimes to lay people off, and if that becomes necessary, I would do it. I mean, obviously, the one other thing that I would do, I would lead by example. As a council member, I would submit an item on the agenda and ask that the salaries of the council members also be reduced, because we had a very drastic increase recently, that I think if we are asking employees to sacrifice, we should also sacrifice. Just because the council happens to be at the top as policymakers, it doesn't mean that we should not also suffer the consequences of reducing the funding.
Interesting idea, all right. 15-second response, do you support cutting council member's salary? Brandon?
I do. What I can promise is that, you know, if this $20 million shortfall goes through, the increase in the steps, the scheduled steps of the city council members should be freeze.
And Elizabeth?
If employees are furloughed, I will furlough myself as well.
All right. And another 15-second response, Elizabeth, would you support putting any tax measure on the ballot to help with the shortfall?
To help with a shortfall, specifically, no. I have voiced my support and will continue to voice my support for a public safety tax that's been floating around. However, I know it's 15 seconds, but I would have very strict strings attached to that.
Jose?
No, until we do evaluations of how we're delivering services, management audits, to identify inefficient components of city government that need to be removed.
Brandon, the people?
The people is already overtaxed, and the answer to that is no. I believe the city can find other areas where we can meet that $20 million shortfall.
Right. Next topic, Fresno, should it change its project labor agreement policy? Now, project labor agreements, a contract between the city and the labor unions to work on certain projects. Right now, the threshold is $1 million, so any public works project that's over a million, they go to the unions, they hire union labor. You know, the benefits, they say, is it gets these projects done on time, on budget. There are a lot of detractors who say that's an unfair process, it actually raises the cost for these projects. So Elizabeth, what do you think about these project labor agreements? Are you comfortable with that million-dollar threshold? Should things change?
So I do believe in project labor agreements. I believe they help with workforce development and with local hire, and I believe they're important for our community. And regarding the threshold, I'd have to look into see if it has created any obstacles to the delivery of projects. I haven't heard of any, but again, I'd have to look and see if it has.
Right, local hire is the goal, but the latest reports are, city's not meeting these local hire goals with the PLAs. How do you ensure that they do?
You have to hold them accountable, like with anything.
Right. And other three candidates, you have raised the most money from unions, so how, you know, what you tell your supporters, what you tell the constituents that you may have, that, you know, these donations, these contributions will not affect your decision-making when it comes to these issues?
I've raised the most money from the most diverse sources of all, and I think that just shows the broad support that my campaign has. You'll see a broad coalition of diverse ideologies that have supported me, from the Chamber of Commerce to union organizations. So I think that just speaks to the strength of the people that support me and to the strength of my campaign.
So the union contributions and the support you've gotten will not influence your decision-making?
It has not yet.
Jose, PLAs, recently?
It's one of the disadvantage of collecting too much money from special interests. And I really, I really feel that, in the case of the project labor agreements, I support them, but the one concern I have is that we hire local people. One of the problems we've had in public works projects is that a lot of the labor was coming from LA and San Francisco. No, we need to hire local people for the implementation of those projects. And I would, I think obviously, if the unions are not doing what has to be done, then we have to look at other alternatives. But in general, I would support project labor agreements.
Brandon, PLAs?
Yes, the project. Yes, the project labor agreements. David, I have a history of being independent. I have a history of having perhaps, you know, the most in terms of diverse contribution to my campaign. Now, if you look at who contributes to my campaign, it is the average person. It is the average person who are just like the average citizens, the average voters in District Five. And I can be independent when it comes to City Hall. I can look at the labor project agreement and assess it and see it is in the best interest of District Five voters. And again, you look at how am I going to be independent on the diet? So I'm going to look at a particular issue. In this case, the project labor agreement. Yes, we need to have project labor agreement, but at the same time, the council member has to be independent and has to, again, go back to the constituents and see if this is in the best interest of the people in District Five.
Elizabeth, I just want to give you a chance to respond. Now, they say they're independent because they're not getting the same type of contribution, support you do. You know, defend yourself.
I didn't see there was some tech.
Okay.
And with all due respect, I think that the people contribute to my campaign because I'm an outstanding elected official. I think I've proven over the last eight years being on the board that I've made the decisions on behalf of the residents that are on the best interest of the residents, as proven by the fact that I just recently got elected by 67% of the vote. And so I think the community trusts that I'll make the best decisions on behalf of them. And I think that if I were to win City Council, I think it'll be because they trust that I'll be their representative.
Well, you do have a record as a trustee. One of those things, one of the top issues in your Fresno Unified right now is hiring a superintendent. Why is this process taking so long? It's been over a year.
So I was hoping that this would be talking about District Five issues and City Council issues, but I'm happy to talk about Fresno Unified issues if you'd like to speak about that.
People are interested.
Absolutely. So without getting too much into HR issues, there was a disagreement on the search process. And thankfully, we were able to bring on a coach involved. And we unfortunately did miss the typical hiring window for a superintendent. You don't normally hire during the middle of a school year. I am grateful that we were able to take this extra time, get our goals and guardrails and all the work that we've done as a board, setting up the Fresno Unified School District to be on a really good trajectory. I'm happy where we're at. We're establishing really ambitious goals for the future and really working towards those as a board. So we've had a really robust community listening process, making sure that all the criteria that the community wants is reflected in our search for the superintendent. And that's been brought forth in this RFP and now award of a contract. So I think it's been proven beneficial that we've taken this extra time. And hopefully, that'll provide a very solid path for the next few years for Fresno Unified.
And were you initially pushing for an internal hire?
I was pushing for a review, but I won't go into HR specifics because I don't think that's appropriate right now.
Jose, a quick response?
I wanted to, I wanted to make a statement real quick that I believe that the issues of the Fresno Unified School District do impact Fresno City Council District Five. I totally disagree with my opponent.
Right, okay. Now, we'll keep with another school district related question. And Brandon, you are a trustee as well. The academic performance for both Fresno Unified and Sanger Unified, are you satisfied? I just want to go over some quick numbers. In Fresno Unified, 65% are not meeting the standards for English. 75% are not meeting math standards. In Sanger Unified, those figures are 51% not meeting English and 62% not meeting math standards. What do you think about all this?
Well, David, there is one statistics that I'm proud to cite, and that is our graduation rate at Sanger Unified. I represent the sunny side of Sanger Unified, which is the Kings Canyon fallow area. And our graduation rate last year was 95.9. And Clovis Unified is also 95.9. Fresno Unified's graduation rate last year was 86%. That's a huge disparity between these three school districts that encompass District Five, Clovis, Fresno, and Sanger Unified. And so that is one number that has consistently been better for Sanger Unified than Fresno Unified over the last decade. And I've been on the board for the last eight years. My kids, I have four adult kids who graduated from Sanger Unified, who graduate from Sanger West, which is in the city of Fresno. And I know the direct impact of one percentage difference in terms of graduation rate per school district, per student. And so I am proud of what we have done at Sanger Unified. But at the same time, a number of 96, we can do better. And that will continue to be better.
Elizabeth, what do you think of the numbers? You know, English standards, math standards. You know, Fresno Unified has this reputation. What do you say about it?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Definitely can do better. And I'm proud of the work that we've done. And part of the work that we're continuing to do is to work towards better achievement. But it's not just about graduation rates. It's making sure that our kids graduate and are college and career ready. So it's just more than just graduate them. It's making sure that they're graduating ready for the workforce. And so our four goals are encompassing not just academics, reading, math, and the like. It's also making sure that they have some of the soft skills that our employers are looking for. Because we're looking at the whole child and making sure that they're ready to be contributing citizens of our community. And so all of those are important, and those were things that our community wanted. So I think we're gearing up Fresno Unified for success. I'm proud of the work that I've done and all the investment that we've done in Fresno Unified, building a couple of new schools, bringing new programs, investing in after-school programs and dual immersion programs that have really brought the quality of life for our kids and our families, have improved them. New health centers, new partnerships for safe routes to school. So there's a lot of work that we've done in Fresno Unified that I'm very proud of. And I think that now Fresno Unified is on a great trajectory to improve those academic numbers.
So you think all those things that you mentioned will help improve those numbers?
Absolutely.
And Jose, you're not a part of a school district directly, but briefly, what do you think about?
Education is a very important component in promoting economic prosperity. Let me tell you something I don't like about the performance of the Fresno Unified School District. Roseville High, District Two, the area this young lady represents, in the math area, only 10% of all the students meet the state standards. That's terrible. How are we going to address poverty? How are we going to promote or improve the workforce of our area? How are we going to attract employers to come to our area with that type of performance of our educational system? That is terrible. And I think that, I don't know if that information was available to the public when she ran for office, but that would have been a significant factor, in my opinion.
When I become a council member, you're welcome to run for my office.
Okay.
Well, no, but I think that there should be an explanation as to why is her such a terrible performance? It impacts District Five.
And brief question for Elizabeth and Brandon. Did the districts get it right by shutting down the schools during the pandemic? Brandon?
Well, the directive came from the governor. The governor directed school districts.
Did you agree with it? Did you fight back at all if you disagreed?
I do. I agree with the school being shut down because my family has been impacted directly by COVID. And, you know, it was a serious health issue for everybody, not just for some, but for everybody. And yes, you know, there were some concerns as into the impact of COVID. But looking back at it, the decision, I believe, was correct. And if the school district, in my school district, had we not shut down, the consequence would be disastrous in terms of finance from Sacramento.
Elizabeth, did you guys get it right during the pandemic?
You know, in retrospect, obviously hindsight is always 2020. There's coulda, woulda, shoulda all the time. But I think if we saved one person's life by shutting down, it was worth it. Now, are we still dealing with the ramifications? Absolutely. Social, emotional behavior, academics, all of that continue to be an issue and stemming from the pandemic. However, when we're dealing with that, when we're weighing in the balance that we were talking about people's lives, I think we did the right thing.
All right. Now, there's going to be several social policies that you'll have to deal with as a city council member. Jose, I'll start with you. If the Trump administration said it's going to withhold federal funds to the city unless the city complied with its immigration policy, would you?
I mean, that's a pretty broad question. I mean, I don't know the specifics.
Well, you know how Trump likes to play hardball. So he said, comply with my policies, immigration policy, or else you don't get any federal money. What do you do?
I would just examine it carefully, but very cautiously. I would not be necessarily go along with him without knowing all the implications, whether the matter is legal. Because sometimes things that are suggested are not always legal. So I would need to know more about it.
Brandon, Donald Trump says, do it my way, or Fresno doesn't get federal funds. What do you do?
Well, David, I am an immigrant. I wasn't born in this country. I came here as a refugee from war torn Laos and understand immigration near and dear to my heart. Now, this is a hypothetical question that may or may not come to fruition. And again, you know, beyond that, it is also a legal question in terms of the parameter that is involved. And so to answer a question that's hypothetical, but at the same time, it does impact the citizens and the voters in District Five quite a bit. And for example, you know, there was a teacher who questioned the immigrant status of Roosevelt students. And what have we done about it? Again, these are real-life ramifications that we are talking about. It's not in terms of, you know, what Trump is going to do, but what is happening right now in District Five? And we have to deal with that right now.
Elizabeth, what do you do if Donald Trump comes knocking and say, do it my way, or I'm yanking millions of dollars in the city?
We have state law. I think that would be our answer. So we have to comply with state law. California is a sanctuary state, and so we have to comply with the state law. Immigration is personal for me as well. We are a nation built on immigrants. I believe immigrants are the backbone of our society and have personal connections with immigrants. And so I think, yeah, I value our immigrants and stand with our immigrants. And I also think that we have state law.
Jose, don't mind, what are your personal connections?
Sure. So both my mom and my dad were immigrants, and I have family as well. My dad has since passed away, but my mom has now become a US citizen. And I have family that's here as well.
Now, I did a little studying. Your mom is originally from Mexico. Your dad's originally from Canada.
Correct.
And you were born in San Bernardino, correct?
Correct.
So there you go, the North American story.
Yep, NAFTA.
Jose, what do you think of this? Or we asking this, right? Forgive me. Brandon, you had some to add?
Yes, I mean, we look at District Five. And District Five represents the city of Fresno in terms of the melting pot, in terms of its diversity. But at the same time, who on this panel is best to represent District Five? And if you look at a totality of circumstances, I believe I'm the best candidate to do that. I understand the moment in time. And not only that, I understand what the needs of the community is. And at the same time, we have to look at the people, the voters in District Five, and go into them and talk to them, see what they want. Yes, it's great to have, you know, questionnaires. It's great to say, you know, send me what you think. But have we gone up to individuals and go out there and talk to the voters? What is the concern, concerning issue to you right now at this moment?
Right, Jose, just to be fair, you're born and raised in Mexico. You came to the Fresno area in your teens. Now, just to make you kind of relate back to the budget question, but what should the city do, if anything, when it comes to spending taxpayer dollars to help the immigrant community?
I think that we need to take a very humane approach in helping individuals that live in our community. They're members of our neighborhoods, our community. And we should do, and they're contributing taxes every day, every time they go to the store, every time. And obviously, they also pay income tax. There are different ways in which they participate. And I may make the observation that our economy, being a very strong agricultural economy in the Central Valley, depends tremendously on the labor of Mexican workers. And therefore, I think that we should be as humane as we can and as we as Americans have always been. We always help other folks. And I feel that we should continue to assist folks that need assistance in this time of emergency.
Elizabeth, what should the city, what kind of services for the immigrant community? I know there's been some, you know, to help them with their immigration issues. Should taxpayer money be funding that from the municipal pot?
I think we should, so the way I see it is the services that we provide in the city of Fresno should be a respective of, we're not asking immigration status, and we should provide it equitably across the city. So whether it's for our immigrant community or not. If you're setting up a business, you should be treated the same way as if you're an immigrant or not an immigrant. So I think making sure that our systems are set up and our access is equal to everyone, that's, if you can level the playing field and make it easy for people to start up a business, no matter if you're an immigrant or not, that's just the best way.
And Brandon, should the city be spending the taxpayer dollars to specify any specific immigrant programs?
David, this is a country of compassion from day one since 1776. I mean, everyone who has entered this United States of America from day one until today are, or were immigrants or is an immigrant. And I am one example of that. And so city services should be provided to its citizens and its people, regardless of their immigration status. You know, equity of services should be provided without asking people, what is your immigration status? Are you green card holder? Are you a United States citizen? And so the city should treat its citizens, should treat its people equally across the board.
All right, now, do a little bit of lightning round here. Try to keep it brief, yes or no, when it comes to the spending for, you know, taxpayer programs, taxpayer that the city programs have done in the past. Brandon, should the city be engaging in any type of program for helping people with their eviction status?
Yes.
Should Fresno engage in any type of rent control?
Given the economy right now, people are forced to live on the street because they cannot afford to pay rent. Yes.
And we've heard of a guaranteed income program. The city hasn't really done anything like that. Was that something you'd support in the future?
I have to read more into that guaranteed program before I can give a concrete answer.
All right, Jose, eviction protection program. It's a program the city, about $2 million in the budget. Do you support that?
Yes.
And rent control?
I happen to be a landlord, and my partner is listening. I say yes.
All right, and guaranteed program, income program in the future? Is that something the city should explore?
I'd like to know more about it.
All right. Elizabeth, same to you. We'll start with eviction protection program. Keep it?
If it prevents homelessness.
All right, and rent control?
No.
And guaranteed income program?
Not with taxpayer dollars.
All right. Character matters. It always comes up in campaigns. You know, we heard a little bit about all your stories. You know, Elizabeth, you've been criticized for running for this seat just a couple months after you won reelection to the Fresno Unified School Board. What do you say to those criticisms?
The opportunity presented itself. I think the voters of the district have the opportunity to make the choice. And I hope they choose me.
Now, Brandon, you're kind of in the same boat. I mean, you just run reelection too. And now you're running for Fresno City Council?
Well, David, I was elected in 2016 initially. I did not have a challenger in 2020, or neither do I have a challenger in 2024. And so it is a testament to my work on the board. For the last eight elections, the people in my district have said, okay, we, you know, know what you have done. And no one has run against me for the last two elections. That is a testament to my work on the board. And I'm a father. I'm a stay-home father. I'm a volleyball dad. I take my kids to practices, school, club, volleyball, et cetera. And I was able to devote full time to being a trustee and at the same time, being a dad to my four boys. And so, yes, character do counts. What people have done, what you have done the last eight years, what you've done the last 10 years. My wife and I raised three boys in the last 13 years. And I was a stay-home dad. But not only am I a stay-home dad, but I have the opportunity to pay attention and to... and to do the job that the people voted me in in 2016, full time. And I have the opportunity to go out there and to assess and to talk to the students, to talk to the parents, to talk to the staff, the teachers, the principals, to see what is needed. And I would continue to do that if I'm lucky enough to be voted and go to City Hall. I would devote 100% of my time to learning the job and to talk to the constituents and listen to them to see what their needs are.
Jose, this election loan is costing the city $200,000 because Louis Shabbos, the prior occupant, he won election to the Board of Supervisors. Now, if Ms. Johnson-Rosas wins, that's going to create another vacancy for Fresno Unified. And estimates I got if they choose to hold a special election is $150,000. Who should be responsible for paying for these special elections?
I think that, I think that the funding of elections should be done the way the elections are normally handled. There really, no reason why to segregate or discriminate a certain occurrence because I think all Americans should have the opportunity to run for office, so.
Well, Elizabeth, do you agree? I mean, you know, if you create a vacancy, that's another six-figure, including on top of what's going on right now. Do you think just the respective agencies should be paying for it?
It's how democracy works. I think the voters will have an opportunity to choose who they want to represent them. And they should be able to choose.
Elizabeth, I want to ask you a question we got from Facebook, from one of our Facebook watchers. You said earlier that your work at Fresno Unified isn't done. If that's the case, why are you leaving?
Oh, the superintendent search party isn't done. That should be concluded in April, which would line up the timeline.
All right. Now, I guess this applies more to Jose and Elizabeth. Jose, if elected, do you plan to keep your job with the Southeast Fresno Development Association?
No, I would not.
Right, and Elizabeth, do you plan to keep your job at Westlands?
I have not had that conversation with Westlands.
Okay. It is a little bit of a non sequitur, but just, Westlands in the news today. Is Kevin McCarthy going to be working for you guys?
We had preliminary conversations with the speaker. Very preliminary.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yes, you know, that question pertains to me too. Being a stay-at-home dad, it is a full-time job.
I'm sorry, you're right.
It is a full-time job. If you try it for the last 10 years, I mean, I raised three boys. And imagine if you raised a boy and a boy and a boy for the last 10 years, imagine that would do to you. I mean, I'm lucky enough and I'm blessed to be able to raise, you know, a newborn and who is now 13. And those three boys are my greatest treasure in addition to the other two kids that I have, in addition to my wife. And so it is a full-time job. And so if I'm lucky enough to go to City Hall, and obviously, you know, the time that I will have to use and to devote to the job at City Hall would take that away from my kids. And so, yes, I would have to, in a sense, not resign, but to remove some of the hours that I devote to being a public servant away from my three boys.
All right. How would you characterize the character of your two opponents here?
Well, you asked the question earlier, you know, character counts. And you look deeply into people's history. Not what they say, but what they have done. And then you interpret what they have done. And people make promises that I'm going to be here for the next four years. But even before people are swearing in, you know, they declare to do something else different. What's going to hold them to the same standard the next go-round or the next year or the next four years? You look at people's character and look what they have done. And what I have done at Sanger Unified is I serve my kids, I serve the students full time. I made the promise to my constituents in 2016 when I ran to represent the Sunnyside area of Sanger Unified. And I kept that promise to this day.
Elizabeth, what do you say about the characters of Jose and Brandon?
I think the voters will make the decision.
But what do you say about them? You know, I'm sure you've learned a little bit about them. They're prominent members of the community.
You know, I'm going to just talk about myself and my experience.
Okay. Jose, same question to you. What do you think about Elizabeth and Brandon?
Well, they're the same. Perseverance is what describes me because I continue to, for the last 12 years, I've been serving Southeast Fresno. I've been doing a lot of the work that the city government should be doing for us. And I will continue to do that until I get elected to Fresno City Council.
All right, another quick question for you regarding your name. We've seen you as Jose Barasa. We've seen you as Jose Leon Barasa. Just maybe you can kind of clarify, you know, what name you want to go by? You know, what do we call you?
Jose Leon Barasa.
Right. And Elizabeth, same to you. Because we've seen, you've seen you as Elizabeth Johnson. We've seen you as Elizabeth Johnson-Rosas. On the ballot, you're going to be Elizabeth, quote, "Roses Johnson." So explain, you know, maybe the origin of your name and what do you want to go by?
Elizabeth Johnson-Rosas. It's an archaic elections law that makes Rosas has to be in the middle in parentheses because it doesn't recognize two last names. They have asked me to go to Social Security to change my name. And I contest that I was born with two last names. I haven't started a GoFundMe for the legal fight, but maybe soon.
All right, and Brandon, just a little about your name. Your first name is G.
Correct. It is spelled G-E, but pronounced Chi. And my legal name is Chi Brandon Vane.
All right. Well, we're almost at the end here. So I'm going to give you guys about 30, 45 seconds. Make your elevator pitch. Tell the voters why you're the best candidate. And Jose, why don't you start? Why are you the best candidate?
I am the best candidate because I have the most experience. And we have spoken about economic development, housing. I don't think we talked, didn't say very much about housing. But housing is very important too. And I have a very good education, master's in public administration and a B.S. degree in business administration. I'm also a licensed general contractor and a licensed general contractor. So I have a lot of experience. And that's, and I have a strong commitment to serve the residents of District 5. And I hope that I'm given the opportunity and the honor to be a council member for District 5.
Elizabeth, why are you the best candidate?
So I appreciate the time here today to introduce myself to the people that I haven't had a chance to meet personally.